At this time, I'll call the June 27, 2019 meeting to order for Dixon County Commission. If you would please stand and join in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item we have is the approval of the agenda, and we have two items that we're going to add to the printed agenda. The first one is for an EMS station, number two, a proposal for repair. And then the other item will be a 10-minute executive session with our attorney, and this will be for attorney-client privilege, and this will be at towards the end, the very end of the meeting. I would move that we approve the agenda with those two additions.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the amended agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have is a consent agenda, the minutes of the meeting of June 20. This is payroll $400,264.71, the wire payments. This includes to Aflac $17.34, Capers $44,691.16, KDHE $148,747.24.
How many would approve the consent agenda?
I second it.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion or anything to set aside for discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner comments? Craig, we'll start with you.
I have nothing today, Lynn.
Okay, Ron?
Just a retirement ceremony for employee. It was nice to attend it. We hate to see these employees leave the county, but we do appreciate the hard work and dedication that many do for this county. And again, I want to live and help you sure appreciate it.
Okay, and I don't have anything today either. So we'll go ahead on, there's no petitions or proclamations. At this time, if there's any public comments, now we do have a public hearing coming up that's on the agenda, so we'll get to that in a minute. But if there's any other comments from the audience on anything that is not on the agenda or nothing to do with that road, you can make comments now. And if you do, you want to introduce yourself and where you live. But if there's none at this time, we'll go ahead and go to the next portion. And this is going to be a public hearing on a vacating 2500 Avenue between Trail Road and Vane Road, with the exception of the west 600 feet in Noble and Reinhardt Townships. Brad, before we start the public hearing, do you want to just give a little bit of a summary?
Sure. You had received a petition that was co-signed by Noble and Reinhardt Township boards to vacate 2500 Avenue between Trail and Vane Road, with the exception of the western farmost 600 feet. This kind of comes about because of some issues we had in researching this. We have some conflicting records that show that some people were under the impression that the eastern half model of that had already been vacated. Our records, we can't find the records to show that it had officially been vacated. So basically what we would, and the western half of it is no longer accessible by, or has never been improved, I guess would be a better description. Back in either the '51 or '93 flood, the small bridge, it's just eastern Trail, on that road was washed out along 2500. It was never replaced. So the roadway doesn't provide any benefit to the public. As you heard earlier from Mary, there are people that try to go down that road and find out that they can't. It becomes an issue with both the township and for public safety for people that were, if they were to get out there and get stuck or what have you. So the townships have requested that we officially vacate it. We included the full section, just so that we clear up any discrepancies that may have been in place from previous ones that weren't documented well over the decades. So the vacate is from, if you start at Trail Road, right here, you go 600 feet, which would be just east of the Full yard's driveway. It would be clear over to the west half, the west driveway of Vane Road. Notice has been sent out to all the property owners that live within a reasonable area of that to let them know that this is on the agenda, and anyone that would like to voice their opinion could do so. We did receive a letter, and I think you have a copy of it, for one of the property owners that is supporting the vacate as well, so.
So we have kind of the summary of that, and as Brad mentioned, there was notice sent out to the public. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's any comments that anyone would have, they could make them at this time. And you'd want to introduce yourself, say what maybe your address is. And before we get to that particular part, I will go ahead and mention I do have a letter that was sent to the county commissioners, and it's regarding the vacating of that road. And they're writing in behalf, that they're part of the trustee of the Verna Dietrich Trust, and the land borders 2500 Avenue, and has been in the Dietrich family for several decades. And so anyway, a little bit what it's saying, I just want to maybe summarize some of this. In the last paragraph, and anyone can, this is public record, so they could certainly see this letter too, just says, "It seems to me if you keep 2500 Avenue as an open county road, you will at some point be required to do improvements to the road." Of course, that would be a great expense for the county. It seems to me taxpayers would prefer you use the money to improve accessible roads that we all need to use every day, rather than two miles of impassable wilderness. And so I ask that you please vacate 2500 Avenue as described above, both as a nearby landowner, but also trustee of nearby land. And this is from Elizabeth Bolz-Morton. Are there any other comments that anyone would want to make at this time regarding that vacated portion of the road or the portion leading up to it? Yes, that'd be fine.
My name is Mary Full Yard. I am the little boot you see right there in the first section at 2210, 2500 Avenue. From what I understand, the vacation starts just east of the portion leading to me. So it's 600 feet in from Trail Road, which is actually a little bit into ours, which we are absolutely fine with that. We are asking, yes, please vacate that in front of our house, and people will stop driving through our yard and around our buildings. The portion leading up to mine, I ask that you do not vacate that so that the county and the townships can continue to work the joint, the culvert issues and repair that road. It has not been maintained at all since the road was closed on the very east end of my property. That's where the road close sign is, is all the way back by the creek. So the entire thing has not been maintained since that happened. The previous landowners were paying out of pocket to have that maintained. My contractor was one of the ones who were grading, I think, Mr. Newey said. You graded it a few times as well, right?
Just as a voter tracker, in favor of Mr. Moyer.
Right, because he didn't realize either that it was still county-owned, township-maintained. So since it has not been maintained, the culverts, the extending culverts has washed away or leading up to where the culverts are that we drive over. We have the pictures and everything, and anyone needs to see them again. The previous road before the county added some fill, which is mainly just washing away right now. We would definitely like for them to continue addressing that to make it safe so that it doesn't wash out the existing culvert that is still good, so that we can also get deliveries back there instead of having to do everything in a quart of a lot.
So the portion you're referring to would not be vacated if we took action on this, but it's in a little bit of disrepair where being washed out, so riprap and the culvert, and there's some issues with the road, and it's a township road, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and they're addressing that, trying to get the right culvert to extend that out, trying to get more fill, from what I understand, and actual riprap, not just dirt and strong cement. Something to try to prevent it from eroding away so soon. Because what they put in there, a good chunk of what they just put in there a couple of months ago is already gone because it was mostly just dirt. So, that is all.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And probably timely, since we're looking at that portion, even though it's not part of the part we're going to vacate, to bring that up, because you've certainly potential for emergency vehicles or any delivery vehicles, like you say, just to be able to safely get to your place.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other comments that anyone would want to make in regard to this road? Kind of the same protocol, if you give your name and step at the podium and give your address, please.
Gary Hauselman, I live at 2431, 2500. So I'm actually not involved with the-
And you can point it out, sir.
Yeah, right there, that's me. No, I'm not involved. I can't remember the last time that road went through. My dad talks about going that way to town, when he was alive, but I've never known it to be open. The one you're talking about vacating, which is, so that part's great. But what I'll add is that I think my portion of 2500 is probably less than half a mile from Vane down to my house there. But it's not well maintained either, in my opinion. Like right now, I've got probably almost a foot deep washout going down, like right where you'd want to drive, you almost have to hug the ditch to get up out of there. A culvert at the end of my lane has been filled in for years. The water runs over the culvert there. And then even up at the corner where Vane and 2500 meet, there's always a big pool of water there, because that culvert that I think should run diagonally under that intersection is plugged and not working. In my opinion, the ditches need dug out going down to my house, and that road needs to be maintained as well, but not much really happens. Once in a while, Robert Allen comes down and mows, like the ditch, but as far as grade or anything, a couple of years ago when it snowed a lot, he was down there and cleaned it out. But otherwise, I haven't seen anything. It's kind of the same thing. I try to take care of it myself with my tractor, so. For what it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other comments regarding an action to vacate the portion that was described?
I have a couple of the comments, but it'll be after, just not on the vacate or anything like this.
Okay. So, all right, if there's any, no other comments, this is kind of your opportunity before we close the public hearing, and we are going to have some discussion that's going to follow, so.
May I ask only, how does that apply for taxes? Or is there any change on the taxes or anything like that? Since that portion will become, will no longer be county-maintained, county-owned, and it will be vacated back to the owners, how does that affect us as far as property tax? Or is there any effect?
Okay, and I'll go ahead and defer to our county administrator to answer that.
Typically, you own a property less right of way to the center of the road, where your deed reads. You really pay taxes on to the middle of the road, however, the part you don't use is minimal. Since this is pasture, I would guess probably the increase to those property owners, because you're right, it does go back to the ownership to the middle, is probably a couple bucks. I mean, it's very, very negligible amount, if any at all, so.
Yeah, that's all wooded area.
So it's not really a profitable land or a real property or anything, so the amount that it could increase is so insignificant, you probably couldn't figure it if your people wasn't increased.
Okay.
Mike Fink, trustee with Noble Township.
Oh, yes, and your name?
Mike Fink with Noble Township trustee. The section of Hauselman's on 2500, we have a reciprocating agreement with Reinhardt Township.
We're going to discuss that after we vacate the road, Mike, remember. This is just vacating the road, so we're going to discuss that.
All right.
Thank you for the comment.
But we will.
Yeah, we're going to discuss that.
And I did, I might mention, I kind of opened that up where we got into this other, but we kind of wanted to hear that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, that's no problem.
I hear you.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing as far as the comments on vacating that portion of the road that we've described. So the hearing's now closed. I think we can go ahead and hear, Craig, do you have a comment or?
No, it's the vacating the road, it's, I think the other issue is the maintenance of, between Mary and down to Mr. Hauselman's issue, which is not part of the vacating the road.
Okay, and so we could act on the resolution to vacate the road and then go into the discussion as far as the maintenance and the townships. And this is a application to vacate 2500 Avenue between Trail Road and Vane Road less the west 600 feet in Noble and Reinhardt Townships, Dixon County, Kansas. It's Resolution 062719. I'd go ahead and make the motion that we vacate that according to Resolution 062719.
I'll second that motion.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion on the vacating of the road, that portion of the road? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now-
The other issue.
Well, yes, we'll go to the other issue that's been brought up about, and the portions we're speaking of, both I believe are township roads, not county roads per se, but you know, still we have an interest when we hear comments on that. So Mike, if you'd want to make your comments at this time, this would work out.
Mike Fink with Noble Township trustee. I apologize for the lack of maintenance on your road. We have a reciprocating agreement with Reinhardt on that small section of 25 between there. If you're not getting things done, please call, and anyway, we'll work with Reinhardt, because sometimes we just don't realize how things are in disrepair, even though we go out and we drive the roads. But we did the reciprocating agreement, and we took over part of Bob Roskin's road in response to trade to save on five miles of running and maintaining. So anyway, if-
And it's Reinhardt's responsibility.
Yeah, and so if you need something, call me or call Jim, and anyway, we will sure address it, you know, to meet your needs.
And then who takes care of Vane between like 2450 and 2500?
Reinhardt.
Is that Reinhardt too, same deal?
Yeah.
Okay, that road-
2500's the township line breaking point. Everything to the south is Reinhardt, and everything to the north is Noble.
Right.
Which makes it difficult when you're right on that one line.
Yeah, I live in Noble.
And I do apologize to you, because like I say, we were working with you on that whole deal, and then when we noticed how the line actually went versus where it falls on your property, that's when we got with Reinhardt and started that. So I apologize it took so long, but it took county engineer to open my eyes to see where the line actually was.
So where it's, you're the north side and he's the south side, so that you're trying to get that road.
Now let me ask you this, so, Mike or John, what we're married at, whose responsibility is that? Is that a strict agreement between Noble or Reinhardt to take care of that?
The 600 feet that's left is all in Reinhardt.
Okay, okay.
Just the river drags over.
Yeah, well, I knew, but I mean, I didn't know.
Yeah, we always thought it was half and half, but you know, the river actually has it pushed over.
We always saw it as the actual road that went through there, and anyway, if you look at the line that's in there, that actually goes clean across the river for us, which was really confusing for me, so anyway. But I say, once I met with the engineer and we looked it over, we're going to try to get it addressed for you, so.
And I'm sure the rains and weather and so on have really exasperated the situation.
Tell me the issue you have, right, Mike?
We're just trying to fill sinkholes and stay ahead of the game. We're failing miserably, but we're getting it done, so.
Well, it's good to have the discussion, and hopefully there, you know, some things can be worked on and improved and-
Yeah, and like I said, we've met jointly with Reinhardt and anyway, trying to get things squared away on this, and it's been productive, so.
And I know you have your budgets to work within and things like that, so I mean, it's, in a reasonable way, hopefully it can be addressed.
Mr. Hoffman came up, the county had brought a lot of dirt and put there in some rock. And we were talking, I was showing pictures, and I don't know if you guys have been out there. I know somebody was out there yesterday. But that's what they put was dirt, and that's of course washed off. There's still, there's still a good bit there, but it's still just coming all the way up into the culvert. And what Mr. Hoffman was saying when he came out there, and because when the county put all of that pack in there, it filled the culvert, so he had to dig out the trench so it could drain. And what he was saying was that we don't need to replace the one actually on the road, because that is in concrete. That portion, that 10-foot of it, is still good, but it's getting washed out because it's a real, it's a compliment to it.
I'm going to go back to the agenda, but what I would like, you know, if you have some of those discussions with the township, and maybe something between you all you can discuss, and John Goff is here, he's county engineer. And so, you know, as a reference or to get additional information, I mean, you know, we certainly want to make his expertise available to the degree that you want to hear it, because I mean, it is really up to the township.
Yes, sir.
And we aren't trying to ever tell township, this is what you have to do or we want you to do. But yet, you know, we all, we're all in this together, and we work together, and we're kind of part of a large community together, so.
May I ask one other question on 2500, just as this is addressing it? It's between 25 and rain.
Yes.
I mean, between Trail and rain. We all know that where sage comes down and hits 2500, or goes north and hits 2500. It is a very steep decline going to it, and the water just rushes over there, even if it's just raining. It eats away at 2500 so bad that there's huge ruts there, and there's usually, you know, several inches to sometimes a foot of water rushing across right there. Is it possible to get a culvert there to try to divert that water underneath? Because the ditches come down and it just hits the road, and it's, the water's going to go past the least resistance. So it doesn't make that 90-degree bend to go down the ditches that are filled with dirt. It's going across the road. So is it possible for the county to consider putting a culvert there?
What we can do is look into it, and this is something that probably still would go to the county engineer, that if he has a recommendation to give us or information just to assess the situation, but we certainly wouldn't decide on anything without it being an agenda item, without a report. But I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and at least we can-
It's just a dangerous-
Find out some information. Okay. I think that's all we have on that, and all of you are welcome to stay for the rest of the agenda on things we're doing, but also quite often, if your particular item is taken care of and you have other things to do, we understand if you want to leave before the meeting's over, but you're welcome to stay otherwise.
Come on, Bill. Bill, you have nothing to do. Free lunch?
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and move to our reports of county officers. Brad, if you'd give us your report at this time?
Yes, good news is, we earlier on Monday, we received a building permit for the jail courthouse renovation project. So we now have the Aflac City Building Permit completed. That's a big milestone for us. We've also received approval from State Fire Marshal's Office. They've given their blessing on the jail, which is on all the case facilities. And we got the finalized site plans done for the dirt work and stuff around. So with all that, Lloyd Builders is sending, or has sent the information out to the bidders to get a newly revised bid with the changes on the site work. And next week, we should have that stuff back so we can take a look at it and come and meet with you on the 11th, I think, or I don't know. What did we say, the?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yes.
At nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock, correct. Maybe I'll note it somewhere. So at that point, we'll go through all the bids and all the bid groups. And the objective of that meeting is for you to receive those and approve them and sign the agreement with Lloyd Builders. Once they give us guaranteed maximum price to the project moving, that's the day we've been looking for, for a number of years, so. Our crews, talking about roads and bridges, we've been very busy. Our crews started on Monday morning in 1400 Avenue and Rain, and they are overlaying asphalt north. They'll go to Chapman and check the angle barriers, the Southbound Lane. And once that's done, they will move over to Eden Road and 1400, and they will go east until money runs out. Honestly, we're hoping to make it deep there over, from there over to the bar. But with the changes, or the budget constraints we've got, you'll learn, and they're monitoring on a daily basis, they'll run until they run out of money and this budget to, in the asphalt line, I'll get as much as we can, so. John and I were out looking Monday morning, or I guess it's Monday afternoon, I think we're doing. Guys are doing a good job, so with some decent weather, hopefully it'll continue and get it done, so. The asphalt portion of the roads that we contracted with Apex Shears in the south end of the county is scheduled to be painted, maybe starting even tomorrow, but for sure Monday, the contract is supposed to begin, and start striping those roads, so they'll get that done. The paint, I think, arrived yesterday, and so he usually comes in and he's in within the next day or two to get it going, so. And that, we know from past experience that that's a very important component to the public, is make sure those stripes are on the road. Now we talked about Lloyd Builders coming in on the 17th, so Mike, we're good to go. Appreciate any other questions.
Okay. Doug, would you have anything for us this time?
I'll just a couple of things before the attorney-client conference. We've seen the request for payment from Gary County for the executive director's position for community correction. And that would be consistent with what the meetings we had before. It would be consistent with the meeting that Craig and I was at with the change over there. So unless you have questions about that, I'm assuming that that's a bill that should be paid and worked through, but that's Dickinson County, a portion of it. I today received the second packet for the tax, packet for 2019 tax sale. So we will now begin to go to work on the tax sale for 2019, the little part of the real estate that have fallen into a period of arrears. Now we move forward with that. Tax sale's not set, but now I have the information from both title companies, and now we will proceed with beginning that process. So we'll probably be looking at a tax sale here later in the year, probably November, December. And all I have till the attorney-client, or give the information.
And I did get the bill from Gary County, we've got the process for that, so.
Okay, we'll move on to notices and communications. We did receive a letter regarding the fair for Tri-County, and Thursday is their PRCA rodeo. Friday, they also have ATV rodeo, demo derby, and they have sent us some buttons, and so we can go ahead and attend the events if we're able to. And so anyway, we're one of the sponsors of Tri-County, and I know that's a, really a big event for people in the county and also in the Harrington, Tri-County area. I don't, Ron usually attends that, I don't know if you want to add any comment to the notice we received.
They sure, they sure would like to see a lot of participation in that, and all's welcome, obviously, and it's a good event to get out and see what's going on, so. Encourage everybody to attend.
Okay, thank you. And then we also, County News, received our letter from them, and that's all I have as far as notices and communications. So we'll go ahead, there's no additional resolutions. We did have one addition to, actually two additions to the agenda, but one of them, we'll consider at this time, is the EMS station has a proposal for repairs. And Brad, would you go ahead and summarize that for us?
Yeah, as best I can. Over the past few years, a number of years, we have noticed some issues that have developed, EMS station too in Harrington. Primarily, or initially, the first issue we noticed was the center wall through the building was settling, causing doors not to shut properly. And we adjusted doors, we actually trimmed doors, we cut doors off several times, and it's continued to occur, and we've noticed that the front overhead doors on the ambulance bays on one side has sizzed tremendously, and it's the side toward the middle of the building. So also, it's indicative of that center, center wall- So also, it's a dickie with that center, center wall there that's settled. We've had engineers look at the original design plans. The company that built the building went out of business shortly after it was built. And we've had engineers look at the design plans, the original design plans, and we've contacted a company out of Wichita that is called Thrasher Commercial. And they specialize in raising foundations and things of that nature. They've been in, looked at the plans, looked at the problem, and have come up with a scope of work to repair and the problem and prevent it from occurring any further. And essentially what it is, is they would dig down with some piers and go down the bedrock to stack the piers on. And then they were using polyurethane foam, they would inject that in the ground to raise the floor and the walls up to where they should be. And then they would pin those piers to, to the walls so that they won't sag anymore and fix the problem. So it's not a problem that we want to have. It's one of those things that is unforeseen. We don't know whether the problem is because of the, the geology in the ground underneath has, has just allowed it to sink or whether the work was inferior at the time it was built. Bottom line is, we've got a problem we've got to solve. Otherwise, we, we weren't, the initial, I guess the initial issues we developed were on the roof about five or six years ago. We had leaks in the roof and we had somebody get up and look at it internally and the boards and sheeting was separating from the rafters, so. And at the time, we didn't know why, but then when the door started to become a problem, it became very apparent why it was dropping in the middle, so. The bottom line is the bid from Thrasher, which is the only company we've been able to find the last couple of years that were doing work like this, is $65,250 to come in. It'll take them about two weeks to complete the work. And they can start the second week or the end of the first week in August and complete it. We've got plans where we can relocate the staff down there for that two weeks and continue to function. And there will be a little bit of added cost outside of this, this price to replace the carpet because they have to take the carpet out to do the work and then also replace, move and replace the sink that has to be moved out of the way to, to do the work. So it's our recommendation that we'd like to bullet, move forward on it, get the problem taken care of.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? We can consider a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to accept Thrasher's bid, $65,250 to repair the, the emergency station in Harrington.
Second it.
We have the motion and the second to approve that bid from Thrasher Inc., $65,250. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The other item we have before the executive session would be to authorize that I come in and sign the fund expenditures due, since July 4th is our scheduled meeting. And of course, being a holiday, we will not meet, so I would need to come in and take care of that and, so is there a motion to have that I would do that?
So move.
I second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we have a, an executive session. It's attorney-client privilege. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we enter the executive session at 11:35 for 10 minutes. Attorney-client privilege, so Doug Thompson would be present along with the commission and also Brad Hallman would be present.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I mean, at what time are we starting this?
11:35.
11:35, okay.
Okay, it's 11:45. I would move that we re-enter into regular session. We have a second. Any discussion? Motion and second to re-enter a regular session. The executive session's closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't believe there's any other business or any other comments that we need from our administrator or attorney.
You might, future meeting and agenda items.
Okay. We do have on July 11th, we're going to consider on the Kruger subdivision. And this is on the, it's going before the planning commission. And there's also a public hearing July 11th. This is to vacate 800 Avenue. July 17th, we're having a special meeting and we're waiting to confirm unless we've heard back from them. But we will probably be meeting at 9:00 a.m. July 17th. And we'll advise if there's any change on that time, but just to review with Lloyd Builders, the jail project. There's also, the commissioners have all received an invitation to the 4-H picnic and that's July 9th. And I do plan to attend that, so I think, and I'm sure the others will, most likely, so we'll have that posted. I believe that's all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second it.
A motion and the second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.